Good morning. This is Dan Rodriguez with Merrick Community Services, broadcasting live from Merrick Community Services. This is our second virtual gathering. We're very happy to have Commissioner Jim McDonough with us this morning. He is well-known on the East Side. He's a lifelong East Sider. He'll tell you a little bit more about that. But he's not only our commissioner, he's also our neighbor. He lives a few blocks away from here, and he's become a friend of the organization of me. And so we're so glad to have you this morning, Jim. Could you just tell us, for the few people who might be listening or watching, who don't know a lot about you, a bit about your background and how you became the county commissioner?
Sure. Yeah, thanks. Dan, it's my pleasure to be here. I grew up on the East Side. My mom grew up on the East Side. My kids are the third generation to graduate from Johnson High School. So our roots go deep on the East Side. I married my high school sweetheart. We raised our family six blocks from my mom and six blocks from my wife's mom, and the kids got there. So the East Side is a big part of our lives. We love the East Side and the community and the diversity and the vibrancy of our community and the transitions that we've seen just in my lifetime. But it's always been a community for immigrants that come here and start. There was a time when it was immigrants from Europe, Sweden and Poland and Ireland. And now it's more Somali and Mexican and Mong and Cambodian and Korean. But the hopes and dreams are the same and the opportunities that we provide on the East Side for families to get started in our community. I couldn't be prouder of it. Ran for office 20 years ago. Time was by so fast, so fast. I was fortunate that the residents of District Six, Ramsey County District Six, supported me 20 years ago, and they've continued to support me. And it's just been an honor to serve and represent Ramsey the East Side of St. Paul in their Ramsey County Board of Commissioners.
Well, thank you, Jim. I've heard you give an introduction many times. Your people introduce you. There's one thing that I'm always amazed about your background, and that is your work in the trades. Our number-one conversation, we talking about you actually working in the IDS building.
Sure.
It might be interesting for people to know why you were involved with the IDS building and what you were doing there. You have a special skill that not everybody has.
Well, it's interesting. I graduated from Johnson High School in 1973.
You were governor?
Yep, yep. And like a lot of Johnson grads back then, I went to work for Whirlpool. Whirlpool was one of the major employers on the East Side, as was three M and H's between them. There was 6,000 jobs that supported East Siders for the most part. And I went right to work two weeks after high school. I was working at Whirlpool. But then after about a year, I had an opportunity to start an apprenticeship as a glazer. Glazers in the construction trade. We do glass.
First time I heard that. I didn't know what a glazer was.
Yep. So I grabbed that. I seized that opportunity. And working in the glass industry as a glazer means you fix broken windows on buildings. And I worked for a company, a long time, St. Paul Company, that no longer is around Larry's Glass on University. They had a lot of the maintenance contracts. And so I spent... I was on the side of most buildings in downtown St. Paul and downtown Minneapolis. But the IDS, of course, at that time was our tallest. So that was always a little badge of honor to say... Not everybody gets to say they were on the outside of that. But the building trades in particular, the glass industry treated my family and me well. I've raised four kids and put a roof over my head and food on the table. I'm pretty proud to be a building trades member.
Well, thank you, Jim. We'll talk a bit more about the importance of trades, especially in this economy right now. And I know you'll be able to provide an update on what Ramsey County is doing to support us in that regard. But before we continue our conversation, I did want us just to pause and acknowledge what's occurred in Minneapolis the last couple of days and wanted to... I wanted to provide you an opportunity to share your thoughts and reflections.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for doing that. You know, I seen the video, and I was heartbroken. I was angry. All the emotions that our community is facing, I shared. And to watch that video, it's tough. You see... You know, you see an individual or a number of individuals that are... We count on to protect and serve, and they failed our community at that point in time. And they failed not only that individual, but they failed our community. They need to be held accountable. This community needs to come together. It's good to see police chiefs and sheriffs and elected leadership and leaders in the community acknowledging and standing with George Floyd. But we need to see rank-and-file members within the police community to start to speak out, to hold theirselves accountable. I talked about being in the building trades, and it's a trade and it's a craft. And we supported each other in the building trades, but we also held each other accountable to ensure that we were providing quality work and we stood the test of time, that we were building buildings that we could be proud of, and we held each other accountable. And, you know, my ask, my ask is, if you're a rank-and-file police officer working public safety, we need your voice here too, not just leaders in the community, but we need your voice to share your thoughts, to stand with George Floyd, his family and our community in this time of sorrow, but then also to help make change in our community to eliminate hatred and the racism that drives a lot of the damage that's occurred here. And we've got a ways to go. I've got confidence in our community. I love our community. But these are times when we're tested, and we need to stand tall. We need to stand out. We need to speak out.
Thank you, Jim. I really appreciate that. I know how sincere your comments are. From Merrick's perspective, we, as you know, serve vulnerable people, some of the most vulnerable people in the Twin Cities and the state. And we know all too often they feel that they're not as valued as others. And we do everything we can and how we serve them to remind them of how valuable they are and their innate dignity, everything we do. And then when something like this occurs, it really brings in the question, oh, you see, this is what I thought was the case. And it's impossible to understand. And I join you in calling for accountability and for justice and hoping we won't experience any more violence or additional loss of life. Sadly, there was another life lost last night, as we were talking earlier, and that also saddens me. So again, thank you for your thoughts.
Yeah.
So have you heard that we're having a pandemic, Jim?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And I have read with great interest that the county, with your leadership, has made some big decisions. And there was a meeting, I guess, a couple of days ago where some decisions were made, votes were taken, and there's some resources available. And I thought it'd be helpful for others to hear directly from you on what is the county doing? In particular, we're interested in, as it relates to health, but also, of course, homelessness, unemployment, the economy, food insecurity. So the floor is yours for now. What could you tell us, in addition to what we read? And maybe just recap what actually took place and what do you... How do you foresee this playing out over the next few weeks?
Yeah. A lot has happened in the last few months. And as a county, for the most part, the services we provide are when individuals or families are in crisis. And there's a lot more people in crisis, driven by job loss, driven by many different things, impact on businesses, small businesses in our community. And so we were fortunate. The CARES Act, the third bill that was passed by Congress and signed by the president, working with International Association of Counties, where we'll get into that, where counties over 500,000 got a direct appropriation. Typically, federal funding will come to the state, and the state would decide how to spend that most of the time. It stays within the state's jurisdiction. And... But because the impact is so local and counties have such a big part of providing solutions and providing support, that counties over 500,000 got a direct appropriation. Ramsey County had 549,000 was one of those counties. And we got $96 million directly from the federal government. It's got to be spent by the end of the year. There are requirements, and we can't supplant our budget. We can't spend it on things that we normally would spend it on. It has to help support the community to get through this crisis. And so Tuesday, we approved a proposal from the county manager. 56 million of that are going to be spent in three areas: emergency assistance grants, which typically help individuals and families with rent payments, maybe a mortgage payment if they're in danger of going into foreclosure, utility payments could help with food. But truly, an emergency situation usually driven by loss of job or if it's a small business, a family that runs a small business that they haven't been able to generate income. Another area we'll be focusing in on workforce and workforce training. Even as we slowly reopen, it's going to look different, right? Businesses are going to come and go. A lot of them won't reopen. And when they do, they're going to open up in a different way, maybe. And so we took a chunk of that money and we're really focusing in on careers, career training, where the jobs are to help support folks and individuals in our community that have lost jobs to be able to be self-sufficient and support themselves and their families. And then another part of that, 15 million of that 56, is to support very small businesses, which is going to be helpful here on the East Side. We have One Village. We have a number of very small family businesses on Payne Avenue, Arcade Street, Seventh Street, White Bear, all over the East Side, all over our community. There's been a lot of federal and state dollars for businesses, but the smaller you get, the harder it is to get help and support. This money that Ramsey County is for very small, under 20 employees, under $1 million in revenue, up to $7,500 to help with rent payments, to help with keeping themselves positioned so they can reopen, to help with reopening costs. Because reopening, you're going to have costs. You've got to pay for sanitation and cleansing and mards and Plexiglas and all these other things. And so we're going to be there to help. We start... That started yesterday. I encourage all the folks to... Any small business owners to apply. Go to RamseyCounty.com or Ramsey County Means Business. Google that, and that will take you to that. And we've got... And we're working with community organizations to help make those connections and help support that work. So Among American Partnership, the Asian American Development Corporation. The list is long, clues. But all these community support groups that are supporting our communities are going to be the ones that are helping navigate and provide support for those business owners. And then we utilized 14 million of that 96 to help cover some costs that we've already incurred. We spent over $8 million just supporting the homeless population. And I'll come back to that a little bit because I spent a lot... Every day I spend on our homeless population. And then we've got $26 million here to help support us between now and the end of the year to help us be prepared and be responsive and flexible to be able to help support our community. One example of that is on Tuesday, we did use a portion of that money to pay for a contract with Doubletree, a hotel downtown St. Paul, to provide rooms for our homeless. If I could just maybe talk about the homeless and the big issue there because it's always kind of a... Homeless has been a part of our community for a long time, and it's always there. So many times, it's invisible to so many people that they don't realize it. But there isn't a day when I'm not working on homeless issues. But with the pandemic, it's really changed. No Dorothy Day Place, Hyatt Brown, Safe Space, Union Gospel, our three overnight shelters. Typically, we can house up to 800 folks, but they're really tight. They're bunks. They're on mats that are like a foot apart, right?
So much social distancing, right?
That doesn't work in a pandemic where you want to keep people six feet apart so you don't have these hotspots, right, within our shelters. So we had to downsize the three shelters, 423 beds or mats, to be able to provide that safe space for the individuals who are sheltering, but also for the volunteers and employees that are working there to help support. So that was a huge undertaking. We're not there yet. We're still... We're on a good path, but we still have not been able to get there. But the solution to that is hotel rooms. You know, Continental, Doubletree, Capital Ridge. We're actually contracting with those hotels, which is a win-win because they're not renting out their rooms. And when we contract with them, we're doing a food contract so they help provide food for the individuals that we're sheltering in there. And so we were able to provide that social distancing. We're able to provide a safe, quality spot to help shelter. Our unaccompanied youth has been another issue where we've really had a struggle focusing on because typically, that population, and when we say unaccompanied youth, we're talking 25 and under, they couch hop a lot. So they're not always on the street, but they'll go from friends or relatives, and they couch hop a lot. Well, in the pandemic, they were losing that opportunity because they weren't necessarily welcomed into families because of social distancing and people tried to protect their own families from exposure. So we used that same solution, hotels. We contracted for up to 60 rooms for our unaccompanied youth, again, providing... And there, a lot of the food support has been coming from the community of volunteers that have been providing support for our youth, our families. We always have used hotels as a solution for our families. We don't put families... We have the Family Service Center for our families, but we've always used that. So the cost for us of providing services to the unsheltered and sheltered homeless population has just skyrocketed. We also have homeless, sheltered and unsheltered that start exhibiting symptoms, right? And so we need to get them out of these situations. So we opened up the old Mary Hall. It was a Catholic Charities facility that we're staffing through Minnesota Community Cares to provide the medical respite there. It's an actual medical facility. So anybody in our homeless population gets referred there from our three shelters and/or street workers, outreach workers. There's protocols, but it's a referral so we can get these folks so they're not infected or potentially affecting other folks. If they are testing positive, get them tested. If they are testing positive, get them into hospitals if need be or provide that quarantine situation. We have a backup and an overflow at Boys Totem Town if it starts to accelerate, where we could accommodate up to 200 individuals who are testing positive or showing symptoms. So a lot going on, a lot more to go in that homeless area, but some of this money will help support that too.
Well, thank you, Jim. There's been some predictions for some time, despite what some people at the federal level say, that a pandemic was possible. How do you think the county has responded? And what have you learned that you didn't know before? And how is the county adapting? How it used to do things to how it has to do things now and how it may look for the foreseeable future?
Yeah, actually, I sit on a Blue Ribboned Commission. We meet twice a week statewide, run through our state association of counties to really take a look at how do we... We're learning a lot, but in summary, it is we're, because of the pandemic, because of the crisis, we've been able to be much more flexible and nimble. Turf control kind of goes out the window. Status quo protection kind of goes out the window, you know? All these big barriers to change, right? And so we're finding some of the things that we've... How we've adjusted in providing services are actually more effective or more efficient or both. And how do we not lose that, right? And I give our county manager, Ryan O'Connor, and Ramsey County a lot of credit. From the very beginning, as we developed our plan on how to operate 4,000 employees, continue to provide services, our goal was always never to shut down, not to eliminate anything we do. Find ways to do it in a different way. Find ways to do it in a safe way. But find ways to support our community and be there for our community. And so from day one, everything we do and had done in the county, we've adjusted, you know? Almost all of our employees are working from home. A lot of them had to be reallocated. Our parks, for the most part, were shut down, our ice arenas, you know, our park systems. So a lot of our park workers have been reallocated, and they're providing support in the homeless area. They're providing staff at these hotels. And our employees have stepped up. Our libraries developed a whole system of how to... People can check out a book online, curbside, pick it up and get it there and still get the support they needed with the at-home learning for their children. We're finding that that's very popular, and it's worked well. And a lot of the library systems that actually shut down have taken our model so that they can continue to provide support. So even the county board, we haven't met for two months in chambers. We meet by Zoom, and we do our official business by Zoom. We will go back to meeting in person. We need to do that. But we're learning that you can do a lot with these Zoom and WebEx and go-to meetings that can help you be more efficient. So we're learning a lot. We're being flexible. Every day we adjust. But the one thing, the message that I want to get to everybody who's watching here is Ramsey County is open for business. We are here for you, and we will continue to make sure that we provide the services and support that you need.
Thank you. So much of what Merrick does, I tell people sometimes, is to provide both help and hope to people. We're looking for both. And it's to help people help themselves and to give them the hope they need to realize their own aspirations. As you think about where we find ourselves right now, Jim, with this pandemic, what words of encouragement do you have? What gives you hope? Why should people have hope?
Oh, I mean, I truly believe in our humanity and as individuals coming together to support a community. I... You know, I talked about our homeless youth population and the support that they've been getting for meals. Food security is a big issue. And I think we could talk it all just on the work that we've been doing in partnership with the state and school districts and stuff on food security. But we have families and individuals in the community that are cooking in their kitchens, and then they're bringing all the food together, and they're bringing it down to the Holiday Inn to feed our homeless youth, right? And they're stepping up. Everywhere you look, people are adjusting, and they're doing it with joy, and they're doing it with love. And that's where my hope comes from, is the love and the resiliency and the caring that I see in our community, not just on the East Side, not just in St. Paul, but in Ramsey County and our state and our country, the caring for each other. And we get tested. George Floyd is testing us, right? We've seen individuals... These are individual acts that will test our community, but we're resilient, we'll withstand that, we'll get better. We'll grow because of the pandemic. We'll be better at serving our community. We'll be better at those relationships and those connections, even though we can't get... I can't hug nobody. I'm a hugger. I mean, I hugged my wife, and that's all it is. She gets lots of hugs, you know? I mean, I miss that personal connection, but in some ways, our connections are different, right? And we've learned how to... As humans, we need those connections. And we've learned how to connect with individuals in different ways. And so now we've got more tools in the toolbox to support each other and to be there for our community. So I'm an optimist for... I'm an eternal optimist. And yeah, we're going through some tough times here, whether it's the pandemic, whether it's being tested in the community on racism and how we treat our people. But I'm as hopeful as anybody that love and caring and strength will always win.
Those are inspirational words. Thank you. As you look into your crystal ball, Jim, usually mine's pretty murky, but as you look into your crystal ball, how do you foresee the economy reopening? How do you see particularly those individuals, which we talked briefly about, who lost their jobs, businesses that are closing? What do you see and what role do you see the county and other governmental units playing in that?
Yeah. Oh, boy, that's a great question. I don't have all the answers. You know, we're learning every day on how to, you know... I think the key to that is what's the county's role? How do we support that, right? As individuals, we can make decisions on how we do that right now, you know? Because I can. You know, my wife and I, we order out at least three times where we help support small business restaurants, right? The ones that are doing takeout and curbside. We're delivered about that. It's great. We don't necessarily need to do that, but we're doing that intentionally to help support those individuals, those businesses. So that's, as an individual, as a family, we're doing that. You know, as a county, early on, we advocated, they went to the governor and asked him to, you know, put a hold on evictions, right? Just because of this situation. And so that was one, I think, his third order. But counties went together to the governor, and the governor was very receptive, you know, to stop evictions during this pandemic. I'm worried about what's going to happen. You know, we talked about reopening. At some point, that order's going to go away. What's going to happen? And how are we going to support people that still are not in a position to maybe pay their full rent or their rent at all? Or even their house payment and mortgage payment? And how do we support the community that way so we don't increase our homeless population? I don't have those answers. But every day, we have smart people thinking about that. Every day, we're... I think where we get those answers, and the one thing I can mention, and again, you can go to Ramsey County's homepage, we've pulled together a racial equity team that are doing town hall meetings. Sometimes the answers are actually... Actually, most of the time, the answers are in the community. We have to listen to the community about how best to serve them. It's easy for us to say, we're going to do this for you or we're going to do this to you rather than we're going to do this with you. And how can we best help you? And we've got to get better at that as a government. Sometimes that's where we fail the most. And I do want to... Now, I have a sense of pride because Ramsey County has taken great strides in that and listening to the community, to working with the community, to responding to what the community says best can help them get through this crisis.
Yeah, the county has... Ramsey County has been a leader in this regard. I've participated in a number of virtual town hall meetings that the county has hosted on a variety of issues, hunger and employment. We've even had some meetings around seniors, some seniors programming as well. And so we really appreciate that leadership. From Merrick's perspective, we are still operating. We were talking earlier that particularly services that are deemed essential, and in general, we were deemed essential by the state because we provide social services to vulnerable individuals, including those that are hunger insecure, hungry, and for seniors. And so our Meals on Wheels program, people struggle to eat. We have modified our program so that we're, as opposed to delivering meals five days a week, we're doing it two days a week. We unfortunately lost a number of volunteers. Interestingly enough, a good portion of the people who deliver food to our seniors, seniors themselves, are at higher risk. So we modified that, honoring all of the guidelines from CDC and NDA. Our food shelf, we're doing distribution four days a week. We did increase our distribution because of the increased need out there. So we're doing five, four days a week here at Arcade. And then we're still doing a couple of days of work with hotels as well, curbside, and following all of the guidelines again. And then we have staff working remotely as well, And then we have staff working remotely as well, working with the county and other partners. So we're still at it. The county's still at it. We really appreciate the county as a partner. Really appreciate it, you, Jim, personally, as a partner. You've supported Merrick over the years. You're our neighbor, so I really have appreciated that. And as we wrap this up, I want everyone to know that this is the second of our virtual gatherings, community conversations. But next month, on June 18th at 8:30, we have our Nourishing Our Neighbors virtual breakfast. We ask people to connect with us and over the breakfast table. Join us to hear more about Merrick and explore how you can support the work we're doing in the community. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Lee Sinek.